That we've lost to this pandemic as we hit unfortunate marks. And also a good friend to Middlesex County who we recently lost. A former Edison Councilman, former Assemblyman and former Senator and Judge Peter Barnes. Thank you. Please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Law, notice that this public meeting has been published in the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger newspapers and posted on the Middlesex County website as well as the front door and bulletin board of the Middlesex County Administration Building at least forty-eight hours in advance of this meeting, which shall be entered into the minutes of this meeting. Participants on this call will have the ability to speak during the public portions of this meeting. Members of the public must press star nine to virtually raise their hand to speak. When your hand is raised, you will be placed in a queue or virtual line to speak during the public portion. The moderator will ask participants with raised hands to unmute themselves. When this happens, the phone operator will instruct the participant to press star six to unmute themselves. You will know when you have been unmuted and it is time to speak when you hear the operator say you are unmuted. When a participant has either completed their comments or told their allocated five minutes are up, they'll be placed on mute by the moderator.
Thank you. Roll call.
County Commissioner Armwood.
Here.
County Commissioner Ascona Barber.
Here.
County Commissioner Kenny.
Here.
County Commissioner Koppel.
Here.
County Commissioner Nara.
Here.
County Commissioner Tamaro.
Here.
County Commissioner Director Rio.
Okay. Recognitions?
Yes, proclaiming March eighth as International Women's Day in Middlesex County and proclaiming March as Nutrition Month in Middlesex County.
Can I have a motion to adopt? Second.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ascona Barber.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny.
Yes.
County Commissioner Koppel.
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara. County Commissioner Nara. County Commissioner.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. County Commissioner Tamaro.
Yes.
County Commissioner Deputy Director Armwood.
Yes. Presentations. I'd like to introduce the two thousand twenty-one budget. Uh, before we get started, I'd like to make a statement. I would like to express how proud I am to be a part of the leadership team dedicated to presenting a responsible budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. I want to thank Commissioner Koppel and the Board of County Commissioners, the County Administration, the County's Finance Department and all county staff, all of whom are committed to serving our residents and maintaining a budget that is fiscally responsible. This budget is the result of months of hard work by everyone involved. And now I would like to turn it over to our Finance Department Chair, Commissioner Koppel, for her statement.
Thank you Deputy Director. As Chair of the Finance Committee, I put before you the two thousand twenty-one Middlesex County Budget for introduction. Over the last decade, Middlesex County has been committed to providing quality services to our municipalities and our residents. This year's five hundred and forty-seven point four million dollar plan is a testament to that commitment and is a result of the hard work and dedication of our Commissioner Board and county staff. This two thousand twenty-one budget is focused on continuing to reduce the county's debt service. The two thousand twenty-one budget reflects a decrease in mandated debt service of over three million dollars. Because of this continued trend, the county is able to maintain its coveted triple-A bond rating, which enables us to spend less taxpayer money when completing critical infrastructure projects such as roads, bridges and signals. Those savings have allowed the county to support projects like the Performing Arts Centers located in New Brunswick, Carteret, Matatchin and Woodbridge, as well as improvements to our county parks and recreation facilities and continual investment in our golf courses. The two thousand twenty-one budget, if adopted, would increase poverty taxes on the average less than one penny per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation for each household, while improving and investing in areas such as public safety, parks and recreation, the environment, community services, traffic safety and business development. The county's implementation of its employee wellness program, one example of the county's continued investment in the well-being of employees, has led to a decrease in healthcare costs reflected in the two thousand twenty-one budget. Over two thousand eight hundred employees take advantage of the program, which cultivates a healthier workforce by focusing on general nutrition, exercise, weight management, smoking, sensation and blood pressure regulation. I thank my fellow commissioners, County Administrator John Polamino, the County Finance Department under the direction of Joe Peretti and all of our employees for their hard work in establishing this proposed operating budget. That's it Deputy Director, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner. And now we'll have a presentation on the two thousand twenty-one budget by Chief Financial Officer Joe Peretti.
Thank you Deputy Director. The two thousand twenty-one budget, operating budget in summary. Salary and wages, one hundred and forty-three million, four hundred and seventy thousand. Other expenses, three hundred eighty-five million, three hundred eighty-nine thousand. Other expenses, grants, sixty million, five hundred fifty-seven thousand. Total gross operating budget, five hundred forty-five million, four hundred and seventeen thousand. Less anticipated revenue, surplus anticipated, ten million dollars. Operating revenue, twenty-five million, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Special items of revenue, sixty-two million, three hundred and fourteen thousand. And special items of revenue grants, fourteen million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand. Total anticipated revenue, a hundred and twelve million and forty thousand. The difference between the gross operating budget and the anticipated revenue is the net to be raised by taxation, which is four hundred thirty-three million, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Now I'd like to take a couple of minutes just to review some of the key drivers for both the revenues and the expenses. For the revenues, the county clerk is up one point four million. Adult Correction Center State Inmates, up by two point two, two point one million. Interest income, down by six hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Golf course operations, up by two point two million. And one-time pay down on note, up by ten million. Our key drivers for other expenses, salaries and wages increase is in accordance with the projected N W I. Economic development, business outreach, up by four point eight million. One-time pay down on note, up by ten million. Contractual obligations, up by two million. Facilities management, up by seven hundred ninety-six thousand. Middlesex County College, up by seven hundred thirty-five thousand. And the next two key drivers are state mandated increases. The first is the state mental institution, up by one point eight million. And then next is the pension, up by two point two million. I'd like to thank the commissioners for the support in putting this budget together, the county administrator, department heads and office director, and also the members of my staff that work very hard. In particular, Mr. Isama Basa, Budget Director. A full copy of the budget can be found on the website, www.middlessexcountynj.gov backslash government, backslash department, backslash finance, backslash. Once again, www period MiddlesexCountynj.gov backslash government, backslash department and backslash finance, backslash. There you can find the full detail of the budget, including the five-year capital plan. And that's my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Peretti, and again, thank you to your department and all our staff for working together to put together this budget. Uh, before I open up to the public, I'd just like to read the following statement. I would like to thank all those joining us on this call tonight for your attendance. Before we begin the first public portion, I would like to state that we will utilize advanced capabilities and technology to conduct this meeting in order to keep the quorum of this meeting and allow those wishing to speak to do so uninterrupted. The following instructions, which the clerk of the board recited earlier, apply to this meeting. Participants on this call will have the ability to speak during the public portions of this meeting. Before participants can unmute themselves, they must press star nine to virtually raise their hand. When your hand is raised, you will be placed in the queue or virtual line to speak during the public portion. The moderator will ask participants with raised hands to unmute themselves. When this happens, the phone operator will instruct the participant to press star six to unmute themselves. You will know when you have been unmuted and it is time to speak when you hear the operator say you are unmuted. When a participant has either completed their comments within the five-minute time limitation or are told their allocated five minutes are up, they will be placed on mute by the moderator. To recap these updates, instruction and instructions, you must press star nine to raise your hand, then press star six when the operator tells you to do so in order to speak during any of the public portions. Now the moderator will open up the floor for public comments only on twenty-one dash three one nine dash R and twenty-one dash three two zero dash R. Moderator, is there anyone with their hand raised?
Yes Deputy Director, I will ask that individual to unmute now.
Thank you. Could you please state your name for the, an address for the record, please?
Jersey Watch, a YouTube channel, broadcasting worldwide. Am I recognized?
Is this Mr. Macropolis, broadcasting worldwide?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Um, you said twenty-one dash two nine five and two nine six, right?
No, I said twenty-one dash three one nine R and twenty-one dash three two zero R.
Three one nine R. I can't find the three one nine. Um, which one's the second one?
It's the one that follows three one nine, it's three two zero. Twenty-one dash three two zero dash R.
Yeah, when I'm looking under the Department of Finance, um, it goes from twenty-one, three eighteen and it's skipping to twenty-one, three twenty-one.
Go to the beginning of the agenda and it should be right at the bottom of your first page and goes to the top of the second page.
Oh, okay, I found it.
Got it?
Yep.
All right.
Now I don't understand what any of this stuff even says, so I'm going to yield my time Deputy Director.
I appreciate it, Mr. Macropolis. We'll go to the next person. Operator, is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Yeah, yes Deputy Director.
Okay. Could you please state your. Hello?
Hi, hi Deputy Director, it's Charlie Cradaville from New Brunswick. I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today. Some questions on the budget on sheet three, yeah, sheet three F has the structural budget imbalances. So I do want to ask about these. Um, I see the Capital Improvement Fund, twenty-four million dollars imbalance. Can somebody explain, um, you know, it says here increase in pay as you go capital funding. What prompted that change and should we be concerned about that?
Mr. Peretti?
Excuse me Deputy Director, point of order, this public portion is only on those two resolutions.
Okay.
So.
Mr. Cradaville, you'll have to confine yourself to those two items.
Just for clarifications, Mr. Cradaville, the public hearing on the budget is the beginning of April, not tonight.
Okay, well, in that case, I'll yield my time.
Thank you, sir. Operator, is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Not at this time Deputy Director.
Move to close the public portion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Can I have a motion to adopt the above resolutions?
Don't move.
Second.
All, uh, roll call please.
County Commissioner Ascona Barber.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny.
Yes.
County Commissioner Koppel.
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamaro.
Yes.
County Commissioner Deputy Director Armwood.
Yes. The clerk will read the summary of the proposed budget.
Okay. Total of general appropriations for two thousand twenty-one is five hundred forty-five million, four hundred seventeen thousand dollars. For two thousand twenty is six hundred eighty-four million, seven hundred forty-seven thousand, seven hundred eighty dollars. Less anticipated revenues for two thousand twenty-one is one hundred twelve million, forty thousand dollars. I'll repeat that one, one hundred twelve million, forty thousand dollars. For two thousand twenty is two hundred sixty-six million, two hundred fifty-one thousand and ten dollars. Amount to be raised by taxation, county purpose tax for two thousand twenty-one. I'm sorry, amount to be raised by taxation, county purpose tax for two thousand twenty-one, four hundred thirty-three million, three hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars. And for two thousand twenty, four hundred eighteen million, four hundred ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars. And that's it.
Can I have a motion to introduce the two thousand twenty-one budget?
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ascona Barber.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny.
Kenny.
County Commissioner Koppel.
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamaro.
Yes.
County Commissioner Deputy Director Armwood.
Yes. The clerk will read the county budget notice.
Annual budget of the County of Middlesex, Middlesex for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. Be it resolved that the following statements of revenues and appropriations shall constitute the county budget for the year two thousand twenty. Be it resolved that the summary of said budget be published in the Home News Tribune, the issue of March twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Middlesex does hereby approve the following as the budget for the year two thousand twenty-one. Notice is hereby given that the budget and tax resolution was approved by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Middlesex on March fourth, two thousand twenty-one. A hearing on the budget and tax resolution will be held remotely via Zoom on April first, two thousand twenty-one at seven o'clock P M, at which time the time and place objections to said budget and tax resolution for the year two thousand twenty-one may be presented by taxpayers or other.
Thank you. Minutes for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. Oh.
Board of County Commissioners regularly convenes February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one at seven o'clock P M.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ascona Barber.
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny.
Yes.
County Commissioner Koppel.
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamaro.
Yes, on the second motion.
County Commissioner Deputy Director Armwood.
Yes. Reports of Commissioners. I will start this evening from the Department of Business Innovations, Education and Opportunity from the Arts Institute. I am pleased to report that the Arts Institute is focusing its energy on the rolling out of wellness-based programs to combat mental fatigue related to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Their work is a combination of outdoor and socially distant, in-person events as well as virtual and online events. The virtual programming events are delivered to the public as interactive, live-streaming programs or as pre-recorded passive programs. The Arts Institute is continuing to present virtual art and storytime sessions every Wednesday at four P M to celebrate Women's History Month. The month of March will feature illustrators, artists, writers and significant historical figures. These sessions are free. Each session includes an activity guide provided after registration. All sessions are recorded and will be available online on our website at Middlesex County Women's History Month. Please visit the county website for further information on these activities and events. From the Office of Career Opportunity, the Middlesex County Workforce Development Board is pleased to announce that the New Jersey Department of Labor will begin offering skill-up to all state residents beginning March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. This decision by the state is a direct result of the great success we have had and the standards set and established by Middlesex County in offering these online training programs to Middlesex County residents since the fall of two thousand seventeen. From its inception, the program has registered more than six thousand residents and recorded thousands of course completions during this time. The first two months of this year, one hundred and sixty county residents have created accounts with six hundred forty course completions recorded. Our Workforce Board is also the first in New Jersey to create a COVID-nineteen task force, which consists of members representing local government, higher education, business and nonprofit organizations. The task force is evaluating the impact the pandemic has had on our local workforce and will recommend strategies to address these new trends. From the Office of Cooperative Extension Services, I am pleased to report that the Office of Cooperative Extension Services continues to facilitate online educational sessions to local farmers as well as to offer pesticide and fertilizer recertification credits to individuals with the county so that they can maintain their licenses and certifications active and current. The spring two thousand twenty-one season of Are You Ready to Garden web series will take place on Thursday evening starting at six thirty P M. The free webinar series will start next Thursday, March eleventh, with a fruit tree breeder, Dr. Joseph Gafretta, where he will discuss the basics of fruit tree pruning for the home gardener. All topics will address seasonal chores in the garden and aim to help gardeners grow food in a variety of spaces. Other topics include planting a vegetable garden, starting seeds on a budget and demonstrating exciting vegetable varieties. This is the third season of the Are You Ready to Garden web series. Please visit our county website for further information. And that concludes my report, Commissioner Ascona Barber.
Thank you Deputy Director. Tonight, the county commissioners proclaim March as National Nutrition Month. We encourage our older adults to celebrate by trying a nutrition challenge each day of the month. Try these nutrition tips and suggestions. Stay hydrated, skip the chips and go green, vegetable, uh, that is. The challenge can be found on the Office of Aging and Disabled Services webpage. It was great to see so many people that came out to the McFoods, the Stuff, the Truck Food Drive Event at the Huiting Stop and Shop in East Brunswick. Hundreds of donors stopped by and contributed eight thousand pounds of food and one thousand dollars in donations. These donations are crucial to the, as we continue to meet the increased food insecurity needs in the county. Save the day for our next event on March twenty-seventh from ten A M to two P M at the Lowe's on Centennial Avenue in Piscataway. You can find more information about this event and other ways to get involved by visiting the county website. And that concludes my report Deputy Director.
Thank you, I'll try to remember to skip the chips. County Commissioner, County Commissioner Kenny.
Good afternoon, uh, good evening Deputy Director, and just to, uh, just to go further on what Commissioner Ascona Barber just spoke about, also Stop and Shop, who, um, worked with our feeding Middlesex and McFoods to, um, have prepackaged items inside. So if you wanted to make a donation, you could purchase a pre-made bag and bring it out to the truck. And so also thank you to them for, uh, putting in the time and effort to help us out on our food pantry. The only other items that I have are Livingston Avenue should be starting back up sometime this month, um, when the weather permits and the, uh, plants are back open so we can get the items that we need. And then the other item that's on the agenda for tonight that I asked for the commissioner's support is the traffic light at Oak Tree Road and Wood Avenue. This would be a replacement of the traffic light, um, creating better handicap, um, curbing. Also, uh, it'll help with the timing on the light by using the motion sensor cameras instead of the loops in the road. And the last improvement for that, um, corner, which is I think the one, from what I've been, what's been explained to me the most significant, is the improvement for the pedestrians that are going to be crossing there. Um, we'll have state-of-the-art, um, signals and buttons and lights for the pedestrians to be able to cross. So, and that's all I have tonight Deputy Director, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Koppel.
Thank you Deputy Director. I have a quick update on Middlesex County CARES Act Small Business Relief Grant Program. This week we proceeded the ninth round of payments for the program. Ninety-one payments totaling two million, two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars were mailed out to small businesses throughout the county to help them remain open. To date, we have issued payments on the average of twenty-five thousand dollars each to one thousand and eleven small businesses for a total payout of over twenty-five million dollars. And that concludes my report Deputy Director, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Koppel. County Commissioner Nara.
Thank you Deputy Director. From the Divisions of Solid Waste and Recycling, the schedule for two thousand twenty-one's recycling and solid waste events has been established and posted on the county's webpage. These events include our paper shredding, household hazardous collection, along with other programs such as tire recycling and various educational initiatives. Our annual recycling guide has been completed and can be easily located on the Division's webpage or be found in paper form in local papers, including the Home News Tribune during the week of March fourteenth. This guide provides residents with important information on what materials are recyclable and those that are not to be included in the recycling stream. In addition, this guide provides an abundance of other relevant facts. The county will continue to practice its COVID safety protocols at all sponsored events. Details of these safety measures can also be found on the webpage. As always, our divisions are available by calling seven three two, seven four five, four one seven zero for any questions and or further explanation on any sponsored event or educational initiative. From the Office of Health Services, Middlesex County health professionals continue to provide county residents with free COVID vaccinations and testing. Realizing that many residents are anxiously awaiting their turn for the vaccine, I can assure you that we are working diligently to administer all quantities of vaccine received to residents as expeditiously as possible. As additional manufacturers are approved and the vaccine supplies are increased and made available, Middlesex County is prepared to increase clinics and work in unison with our partners to get all those wanting a shot vaccinated. Kindly be patient as we all navigate this pandemic together. But also please do your part by maintaining social distancing and please continue to wear masks. That's all I have tonight, Director, Deputy Director.
Thank you Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner. County Commissioner Tamaro.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Director Deputy Director Armwood. Um, our picnic reservations reminder. Due to the ongoing COVID nineteen concerns and existing executive orders in place by Governor Murphy, opening day for our picnic reservations for two thousand twenty-one is tentatively scheduled for Thursday, April first, two thousand twenty-one. Information regarding our new electronic reservations process will be on our website by mid-March. Tennis, pickleball, boat ramp, flying field passes. Spring is right around the corner and we are now taking applications for tennis and pickleball, boat ramp, and flying field passes. These applications are available on our website on the Parks and Recreation page. As a reminder, our office remains closed to the public, but these applications are being accepted by mail. The earlier you send in your application, the quicker, the quicker we will be out enjoying our facilities. And upcoming announcements, please stay tuned to our website for upcoming announcements regarding the Middlesex County softball leagues, volunteer events, concerts, and other programs. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Tamaro. Mr. Kelso, are there any resolutions to be added?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be held?
There are none.
Resolutions to be voided?
There are none.
Okay. I would like to thank all those joining us on this call tonight for your attendance. Before we begin this public portion, I would like to state that we will utilize advanced capabilities and technology to conduct this meeting in order to keep the quorum of this meeting and allow those wishing to speak to do so uninterrupted. The following instructions, which the clerk of the board recited earlier, apply to this meeting. Participants on this call, we have, will have the ability to speak during the public portions of this meeting. Before participants can unmute themselves, they must press star nine to virtually raise their hand. When your hand is raised, you will be placed in the queue or virtual line to speak during the public portion. The moderator will ask participants with raised hands to unmute themselves. When this happens, the phone operator will instruct the participant to press star six to unmute themselves. You will know when you have been unmuted and it is time to speak when you hear the operator say you are unmuted. When a participant has either completed their comments within the five-minute time limitation or they are told that their allocated five minutes are up, they will be placed on mute by the moderator. To recap these updates, you must press star nine to raise your hand, then press star six when the operator tells you to do so in order to speak during any of the public portions. Now the moderator will open up the floor for public comments or questions on agenda items only. There will be another public portion later in the meeting for other items that are not listed on this agenda. This public portion is solely for agenda items only. Moderator, I think I see some hands raised.
Yes, Deputy Director, there are.
Okay, could you please lift the first person?
Yes.
Could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Jersey Watch YouTube channel broadcasting worldwide.
Is this Mr. Macropolis?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. Please proceed.
Okay. So I don't have to read from top to bottom. Do we, do we have any concerning Edison, New Jersey?
I don't know. Do you have a concern about something on the agenda in particular?
Yeah, I'm try- I'm trying to look for the ones that have to do with Edison right now.
Okay. Take your time.
I found one twenty-one, three twenty-nine R. Um, it says accept construction plans and specifications and authorization to bid for ISCO injections. What's an ISCO injection?
Three twenty-nine.
Deputy Director Ron Sender, I could answer that if you'd like.
Please, sir.
Okay, uh, that's an in-situ chemical oxidation where we drill wells into the ground. There's a gasoline leak that we've been monitoring and treating. We're going to inject chemicals into the ground to contain the plume and accelerate its oxidation process. Uh, do you need to know the chemicals, uh?
Um, okay.
Sodium per sulfate, ferric iron, and pH buffers. They're all D E P approved chemicals to help accelerate and break down the, uh, gasoline plume.
Now, i- is this an environmental safety issue in Ed- Edison?
Okay, back in nineteen ninety-six, the, the fuel tanks, the gasoline leaked into the ground. We've been monitoring and it naturally breaks down. Uh, however, we're trying to accelerate the oxidation and the breakdown of that, of that plume in accordance with, uh, D E P regulation.
Do you know the location in Ed- the specific location in Edison where this is happening?
In Edison, Edison Park, there's a maintenance garage there.
Okay. Um, now Deputy Director, I see at the bottom of the agenda, it talks about a pending litigation. Should, should I wait at the public portion to speak or?
Well, we'll, we're going to be going into private session to discuss it. So there's a limited amount that we can actually discuss in the public. Um, I'll defer to Mr. Kelso to explain further.
Yeah, we, um, based upon assuming that the, the commissioners approve a resolution to go into closed session, we discuss these matters of pending litigation. However, they are pending litigation, so there really is nothing, um, in, in any public portion that we can discuss with regard to matters of pending litigation.
I understand. Um, I just want to say for the record for Central Jersey Progressive Democrats, they may call themselves Central Jersey Progressive Democrats, but in reality, they're more like communists and socialist Democrats and, um, I don't know what this, uh, litigation is about, but I hope they lose it and, uh, it's probably a bunch of B S and that's my opinion. I know most of them are a bunch of criminals, um, so, but yeah, um, I'll just say what I have to say about them for the public portion. I'll look back at the agendas. All right, Director Rios, I'll, uh, come back, uh, I mean, I, I'm sorry, Deputy Director.
That's okay, Mr. Macropolis. I've been called worse than like.
All right, um, I'm, I'm gonna come back during the, um, public.
I'll be waiting. All right. Uh, operator, is there, I think I see another hand raised.
Uh, yes, Deputy Director.
Okay. Could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, sir. Charlie Cradaville again, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. Um, I'll begin with a comment that it's very difficult for members of the public to make intelligent, informed comments or ask good questions about the resolutions without, uh, you know, copies of the resolutions and, you know, only with the title. It's very hard to, to really, uh, contribute here. I know a month ago I did ask Director Rios if, uh, there was a possibility that, that this board would start posting the, uh, resolutions online in advance of the meeting like some, uh, boards and, and commissions and councils do. I know he said he would, uh, uh, bring it up at a meeting the following day and have not had the chance to follow up with him. Is there any chance that, that this board will do that for, you know, transparency?
Deputy Director, I would just, uh, indicate that, uh, in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, a general synopsis of a resolution, which is what we do in the titles, is what is required. Uh, in, in, in many cases, the resolutions themselves need to be have finalization with regard to, uh, reviewing and, and finalizing language and such. So we comply with the Open Public Meetings Act with regard to the synopsis that we provide.
Thank you, Mr. Kelso.
Okay, understood. I would just urge the board to go above and beyond the minimum requirement and, and share the resolutions. I presume that the, they're shared with the board members and, uh, you know, for the public to be on the same page, it would be helpful to have those. But I wanted to ask about three eighteen, which is on page six. Um, something to do with, uh, hospitals, serving low-income citizens, um, and providing new fiscal resources to the county. Can perhaps Commissioner Koppel or someone else let me know what this is about?
Uh, Mr. Peretti, this is under the Department of Finals?
Yes, this is a pilot program that City of New Jersey has embarked on. Uh, Middlesex County's hospitals provide nearly two hundred and fifty million dollar uncompensated healthcare services. With this program, the hospitals, uh, uh, are assessed roughly sixty-eight million dollars as an estimate. Uh, the county gets to collect nine percent of those, or about six million dollars. The state gets one percent. And then the remaining, uh, ninety-one percent of the proceeds go up to Medicare for matching funds. And the hospitals have done a gain roughly a hundred and fifty-seven million dollars from this program. So it's a win-win for everybody involved.
Okay, so this is federal money or what, what is the, the source of it?
The source is the hospital fees that get turned over to the state and then the state moves it up to the federal government for matching fund for Medicare. So it's a combination of the local funds, from hospitals, state funds, and matching funds for the federal government.
Okay, and you said sixty-eight million was what the county was looking at, at taking in as a result?
So, we're gonna take in sixty-eight, but we can only keep nine percent of that, which is about six million dollars.
Okay. Thank you for answering that. Um, I see here, uh, three-three-four is, uh, emergency pipe and roadway repair here in New Brunswick near College Avenue and George Street. Can somebody tell me what the emergency was and, um, you know, what's been done about it?
Deputy Director Ron Sender, I can speak to that if you'd like.
Please, sir.
Okay, up, Charlie, up last summer, uh, uh, was a sinkhole, uh, George Street, right close to where College Avenue is. It was a ten-foot-deep, uh, clay pipe. It broke. And, uh, we, uh, declared, I declared an emergency. We, uh, retained a contractor. Uh, he dug it out, he put a concrete pipe back, and, uh, it's been, it was patched up very quickly. Uh, this is just the, uh, the final payment that's due, uh, to the contractor.
Okay, thank you. I do want to also ask about the next, the next two, three thirty-five and three thirty-six. Are, uh, amendments to the county's wastewater management plan? Can you just give me a little bit of, uh, information about why it's being changed and what the impacts are of these changes?
I'm Zep.
Mr. Pulmino, you want to have someone address this one for Mr. Crad- these two for Mr. Cradaville?
Yeah, I believe Solomon or Doug, um, either one on the call, but it's, again, on a regular basis, we look at our wastewater management plan and provide amendments relative to the type of businesses that may be moving in to make sure that our facilities can handle it. But Solomon, if you want to add to that?
Yes, that's correct. If you can hear me. Uh, that plan is just a reassessment of our wastewater, uh, management plan based on the infrastructure that exists and any improvements that need to be made.
Okay, thanks, thanks. Mr. Pulmino, you wanted to say something?
No, again, it's, it's just, it's just to ensure that, uh, you know, based on our current capacity of our system, that any additions or modifications that is in compliance with our wastewater plan po- policy and ensure it can handle the capacity. In this case, it does.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, can I have a motion to, oh, oh, sorry, is there anyone else in the public portion to speak?
Motion to the public portion?
Hi, there are only no others.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, Mr. Kelso, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda and voted successfully?
I do not believe so, uh, unless someone, um, feels otherwise, I, I don't believe so, though.
Okay, okay.
Uh, then, if not, then Deputy Director, a motion would be in order to adopt the consent agenda consisting of resolution numbers twenty-one dash two-nine-five to resolution twenty-one dash three-four-three, excluding resolutions twenty-one dash three-nineteen and twenty-one, uh, dash three, uh, twenty, which was previous, which were previously voted upon.
Have a motion?
Motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Second. County Commissioner Ascona Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner Koppel?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamaro?
Yes.
County Commissioner Deputy Director Armwood?
Yes. Hey, before we go into the public discussion, I'm gonna read the statement once again. Participants on this call will have the ability to speak during the public portions of this meeting. Before participants are able to unmute themselves, they must press star nine to virtually raise their hand. When your hand is raised, you will be placed in the queue or virtual line to speak during the public portion. The moderator will ask participants with raised hands to unmute themselves. When this happens, the phone operator will instruct the participant to press six to unmute themselves. You will know when you have been unmuted and it is time to speak when you hear the operator say you are unmuted. When a participant has either completed their comments within the five-minute time limitation or are told their allocated five minutes are up, they will be placed on mute by the moderator. So to recap these updated instructions, you must press star nine to raise your hand, then press star six when the operator tells you to do so in order to speak during any of the public portion. Now moderator, will you please open up the floor for public comments or questions? There's anyone?
Before you begin Deputy Director, I, I don't know if it's just me, but, um, I'm getting a lot of feedback from, um,
Oh, yes, Deputy Director, if you could turn your mic off and back on again and let's see if that clears it up, uh. Is that better? No, Deputy Director, normally if you could exit the meeting and rejoin, if you can do that quickly, hopefully that will, uh, that will address it. Uh, you, you turn your mic off and back on again?
I think he exited and he's gonna come back on.
We'll give the Deputy Director a few seconds to rejoin. Okay, is that better? Much better. Okay, I apologize if I had no noise pollution there. All right, see we have some raised hands? Yes, I will, uh, allow the first individual to speak. Okay. Could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, sir. Charlie Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. Um, first of all, I wanted to ask about Director Rios. Is he okay? I know he's missed the past two meetings. Do you know why?
Um, he is okay. He's out for personal reasons. I wouldn't like to broadcast. He has notified us, um, but he is okay.
Okay, good to know. Um, I wanted to follow up on the issue I spoke about at the last meeting with Code Blue, the program that's supposed to have warming centers open when the temperature gets below thirty-two degrees. I know that, uh, City of New Brunswick passed a resolution saying that they've gotten a ninety-thousand-dollar grant from the county and that they will begin to abide by that law, uh, once that money comes through. And, and it's my understanding that the county may be taking on a greater role with New Brunswick's warming center. And so I wanted to see if perhaps, um, Ms. Lewis or someone else could.
warming center. And so I wanted to see if perhaps, um, Ms. Lewis or someone else could address, uh, you know, what those changes are gonna be, when they're gonna be made, and, and if you could tell us what the location of the warming center will be?
Who would like to take that one?
Uh, Deputy Director, it's Megan. I can take that.
Thank you, Megan.
Yeah, so, so Charlie, the, um, the state actually provided this additional funding this year. Um, and this was a result of, obviously, the Code Blue, uh, the COVID restrictions that are in place now, um, to help municipalities, um, with warming center restrictions. So, um, we are in the process of awarding that money to, um, to municipalities, Perthamboy and, um, New Brunswick. Um, and really, that's just to help with facility costs, staffing costs, equipment needing, including PPEs, and, um, other things around laundering and cleaning.
Okay, well, I do think that, uh, it'll be a good thing if they start to follow the law and do this whenever it's, you know, predicted to be thirty-two degrees or lower. Can you tell me, is that a condition of the, the grant? Are they promising to do that?
Yes, they are.
Okay, and, uh, I guess it probably won't come through until, uh, springtime, and then, you know, uh, would be in effect for the next winter?
Uh, no, this is actually for this, this season, um, that they would then show us their invoices and their, um, and we would reimburse based on what they've expended. Um, so, it would be for this season.
Okay, but going forward, they're gonna do the thirty-two, because they were not doing the thirty-two this season?
Yes, under this, they would do the thirty-two.
Okay, so next year, there's not gonna be an issue where they start to back off again and say, "We're not doing thirty-two." Um, right, they're, they're gonna, going forward, they will do the thirty-two.
I wonder if they have this award yet.
Okay. Well, that's good to hear. Uh, I wanted to ask the board if you have any thoughts on the legalization of cannabis, uh, now that it is the law of land. Uh, does Middlesex County have any role to play? Um, do you, uh, think this is a good thing or a bad thing, or are you, uh, going to, um, you know, have any say in how this gets implemented?
I'm, I'm not sure if we have an official role in this. Uh, Mr. Kelso, do you know of any official role that we have at this?
No, no, Deputy Director, I do not.
Okay. We have no official role in that, Mr. Cradville?
Okay, um, I do wanna comment on one of the executive session items, but first I wanna make sure, when you go into exec- executive session, you're gonna come back to adjourn?
Uh, no, we're planning to adjourn and not come back to the meeting, Mr. Cradville.
Okay, so you won't be taking any action after you leave?
No, we're not planning to take any action.
Okay, well, I am, uh, familiarizing myself with the matter of Bratton Law LLC versus County of Middlesex. Apparently, this, uh, uh, company has filed suit against a number of counties over illegal fees that were being charged by county clerk's offices. And I understand you're probably not gonna be in a position to respond, at least until you get through your, your executive discussion, but I am concerned about this. Um, I am, you know, generally concerned about the county and the way they handle things like this. I, I know I've spoken to you before about the administrative fee at the jail, where essentially, uh, hu- a hundred dollars at a time, the county is stealing money from the inmates in the, the county jail, uh, and, uh, you know, using that to pad its budget. And I, you know, now looking at this lawsuit, it appears that, you know, the county has been illegally charging people who are doing property deals, uh, a, a convenience fee to use their, uh, online recording, uh, system that is, uh, you know, my understanding, a violation of the law. Um, so, I did...
Time's up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cradville. Is there anyone else in the queue, Mr. Operator?
Uh, yes, Deputy Director, I'll move to the next participant.
Okay. Good evening, could you please state your name and address for the record, please? Hello, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Hello, this is Richard Brescher from Edison.
Good evening.
How you doing? Um, I have a question. In, in Edison, we were looking to get, uh, COVID vaccines, and I guess the township, you know, purchased some refrigerators and, and such to kind of, um, get vaccines out to our seniors. And it's my understanding that Woodbridge receives vaccines. And I guess we're struggling with, how would Edison go about it? And we had, um, I checked with our health department, I guess like over a month ago, and I couldn't seem to get an answer. To then find out that technically, um, a gentleman by the name of Lester Jones is in charge of our health department, to then find out that he has to make the request to the county, of which he's the health, I guess, commissioner in the county. And I'm trying to find out what we need to do for Edison to receive vaccines, and I can't seem to get an answer.
Okay.
Uh, Deputy Director, this is John Pulamina. Let me answer that. I have talked to Mr. Brescher, uh, over the last week, and, uh, because Woodbridge Township is not part of the county health system, the only township that's not, they have the ability to deal directly with the state and get, and getting, uh, the vaccines provided to them. Uh, recognizing that all the other towns are part of the regional, Middlesex County, uh, uh, plan, as a result of that, we are coordinating the administration of those vaccines through our six sites that we've identified. Uh, and, uh, at this point in time, we're also working with Hackasack Meridian, as well as RWJ, to see if there's any other opportunities. But, again, it's, it's clear that the only reason why Woodbridge Township has that ability, because they have their own health office, and it's not part of the Middlesex County Health Regional System.
Okay, so, Mr. Pulamina...
Yes.
My, right, so my question would be, so if Edison wasn't part of Middlesex County, um, we could then do this, we, we could do this on our own?
Yeah, essentially, if Edison decide, if Edison decided to establish their own health office outside of that regional structure, they are more than willing to work with the state to get administrative vaccines. That's correct. But it also goes beyond that. It's all of the health services being provided relative to clinics, uh, as well as inspections. Then all that responsibility, you know, falls within the municipality or township. That's correct.
What, i- is there something that the county provides Edison that Edison doesn't provide itself? Besides signing the forms on the documents? I know that you mentioned that Lester Jones does some consultation, um, yet myself, as a councilman in Edison, requested his audience and presence at a meeting, and we were told that he couldn't come. So, you know, my concern was, w- we're paying for this, we're paying for a service, and, you know, I can't even get him to come to a council meeting. And, you know, I was, I was in business for thirty years, and I, I could just tell you that, you know, when somebody has a service that they provide, you expect some sort of service. And in, in the case of a pandemic like we're in now, where our residents are afraid, or residents are traveling throughout the state to get vaccines, um, to not have that person available, you know, for, for questions, um, you know, I, I don't know, I guess I'm very unhappy with the service.
All, all due, all due respect, uh, Mr. Brescher, as in, I had discussed with you earlier this week, Edison made the decision a number of years ago that when their health director officer, that license retired, uh, they had to make a decision whether or not they were gonna continue to provide that as a service themselves, or join the Middlesex County process. What they elected to do was simply to use our license and provide consultation, but your staff continues to provide all of the health services for Edison Township. That was a decision that the, uh, Edison Man and Council had made. I have communicated that to you. If you want to change that arrangement, we're willing to work with you. But understand, the way it, the construct was established, we provide solely consultation to your staff, and your staff has the sole responsibility of providing all of the health services to your community, because you had a staff in place. The only thing you didn't have was a licensed health officer who had retired, and you were, at the time, they were making a decision whether or not they were gonna bring somebody on or align with the county. So, understand their frustrations, but it's a decision that Edison Township has to make before we can move forward.
Right, no, I understand that. I mean, what I'm questioning is, is the, um, the consultation. You know, being that we're paying for the consultation, if the council requested his presence, why wouldn't he show up to answer our questions, since we're paying for the consultation?
As I indicated, as I indicated, and then you could, uh, we could proceed, but, uh, I had offered that I myself would attend to answer any questions that you may have regarding this matter.
Okay. So he'll be at our meeting on Monday?
Unfortunately, up, Mr. Brescher. Um, I think, Mr. Pulamina, you will have a conversation separately. Uh, am I right, Mr. Pulamina?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, if we could go to the next person online?
Uh, yes, Deputy Director.
Okay. Could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Does he watch a YouTube channel broadcasting worldwide?
Is this Crystal...
Am I recognized?
Is this Crystal Macropolis Broadcasting Worldwide?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please proceed.
I apologize about, uh, Deputy Director, about being so hesitant with, uh, providing my address. Um, even though lawfully I don't have to, but I want you to know that I'm receiving non-stop pizzas to my house, non-stop food deliveries. During this, um, call with the freeholders, I got, uh, three different, uh, food deliveries to my house. I know the individual who's doing it, um, i- i- is, uh, the sheriff, Mill- Millie Modred Scott on, on the phone right now?
Uh, no, she's not on the phone right now.
Not on the phone? Well...
No, sir.
Th- this is an ongoing issue that it hasn't stopped. Um, do you remember my, the last freeholder call when I called in, uh, Deputy Director?
I certainly do remember, and I remember she made your list of your favorite, uh, black history makers.
Yes, sir, uh, but there were other things that I said during that call, and because I made that call and exposed certain individuals, that these individuals are now blackmailing me, threatening my family, um, they're telling me, "Don't stop. All I have to do is say my Mayor Ryman from Carret paid me six hundred dollars to say the things I said," which it's not true. I said what I said because it was the truth. And, um, nobody can blackmail me or threaten me to do anything. Um, they're also threatening, I'm, I'm the vice chairman of the Middlesex County Young Republicans now, and they're also, uh, threatening my...
Congratulations.
Oh, why, thank you. Uh, and they're also threatening my chairman to have me suspended for actually non-issues. That's completely slander. And they actually told my chairman that they will be calling into this meeting and slandering me with nonexistent things, like they've done in the past in Edison, uh, in Woodbridge. So, you know, if someone calls in and, and does a circus, that's not, that's not my fault. That's just the circus continuing. And, um, the authorities know who these individuals are. They're absolutely doing nothing about it. Um, I'm ashamed that, um, one of the people that ran against Millie Modred Scott for sheriff, I believe this person knows what's going on one hundred percent, and probably he has su- such zero integrity that he'll never, uh, reach out to the authorities and say the truth. So I'm just so happy that Sheriff Millie Scott won that election. I don't think Middlesex County understands, had she lost that election, uh, a bunch of criminal mafia, uh, political network would have taken over, and we don't want that now. Um, they would have turned the sheriff's department to go after all their, uh, enemies, rather than respecting people's rights like Sheriff Millie Modred Scott does. And, um, and I just wanted to say to that Mickey Gross guy, he never shows up to Edison. You know, if I was the mayor, I'd fire him, but what can you do? And that's also another thing. I'm also, they won't stop threatening me. They don't want me to run for office anymore in Edison, but, again, I'm gonna continue running for office. Um, yeah, uh, Mickey Gross should be happy. John Pulamina, you should tell your friend Mickey Gross to be happy. I'm not the mayor, otherwise I'd fire him. Oh, and we also have Freeholder Tamara up there. Um, for some reason, these people also wanted me to s- slander you, blackmail me to slander you. I refuse to do that, because Freeholder Tamara always does good for Edison. Um, when I was in middle school, one of his kids was one grade below me and one grade above me, and he's just a normal person, you know, not like one of these Bill Gates elitist-type people. So, yeah, we have, uh, and I believe the people doing the lawsuit and the pending litigation, Central Jersey Progressive Democrats, because earlier, Cradville just mentioned the, uh, the name of the law firm. He didn't say the name of the people, Central Jersey Progressive Democrats. Um, I don't trust them for nothing. I know for a fact they're also connected to this, uh, group of criminals. And, um, where's Director Rios been? Because Armwood, I like to call in and give him a hard time, and if he doesn't show up, I can't give him a hard time.
All right. I know he misses it, but, uh, he's been out for personal reasons. I don't wanna broadcast his personal business, but, uh, trust and believe, I will let him know that, uh, you asked about him.
'Cause I'm gonna tell you what, uh, Deputy Director, uh, I love you and all, but, you know, I wait a week and two weeks. I'm like, "All right, I get to see my director again." Mess with him a little bit, but mess with him out of love, you know?
I don't know, I didn't make your top black people. I was a little bit hurt.
No, my time ran out, Deputy Director. Um, I should have started off speaking about, because you actually do make my list. Um...
You timed up.
Okay, and you make my list because you marched in all the marches, Perthamboy, Howland Park. I saw you everywhere, Piscataway, and I, and I enjoy that. I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Macropolis. Moderator, is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes, Deputy Director.
Could you please state your name and address for the record and proceed?
Good evening, my name is Kamula Telman. Am I, am I okay to speak?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, my name is Kamula Telman, resident of Piscataway Township, New Jersey. Um, I actually wanted to make a couple of comments about the issue with the Bratton case. I'm actually a direct participant of that case, but I just wanted to express concern about the whole thing and how we are at this point. Currently, as it stands, we are waiting for a decision, I believe, from the executive commissioner, to make a decision on whether or not funds will be dispersed to our attorneys. We did put, uh, did appeal before Judge Jacobson, who ruled and made the suggested ruling for the county to act. I guess my concern is, we shouldn't even be in this position to begin with. First of all, it started out as some women who just wanted to exercise their civic duty and represent their counties and use their voices to advocate for themselves to local leaders about issues that they were concerned with. In doing so, it was a, it was a decision that we made, not because there wasn't precedent out there to do so, but because we couldn't find anyone to run with us that will uphold the state statute. As a result, we appealed, we were able to rule, the judge was able to rule on our behalf. We were able to get ballots done so that we can enter a race of county committee women as two women running for that office. And doing that, we were successful in not only running, but we won. So we thought everything was over. In that process of filing that complaint, to have our concerns heard so that we have that opportunity to exercise our civil rights, the judge ruled that, in that proceeding, if we won, the council will be entitled to be dispersed for the, reimbursed for their funds. Hence where we are right now today. Again, another fight. My concern with that is, we didn't have to go this far to begin with, because there was precedent at the time for other counties that were allowing same-gender persons to run for county committees. Once again, we had to fight. So now here we are again, engagement and how the process of adjudication works, the assumption was that once the judge ruled, the county agreed to the rules of engagement, that whatever the outcome, they would abide. And here we are today, our attorneys still have not been, been, been paid. And it, for the life of me, I can't figure out what would be the one thing, what would be the appeal, the ground that you would need to say to not disperse... would be the appeal, the ground that you would need to say to not disperse the funds? This is a difficult county to live and reside in, but one of the most greatest counties in the state of New Jersey because of its citizens, its residents, who have gone and let local leaders borrow their voices to represent their concerns and their cares. So, we're once again pleading to you all to just do the right thing, right? Norman Schwarzkopf had once said, "The truth of the matter is, we know what the right thing is. We know that. We know the rules of engagement. We understand how the, the judicial process works when we are adjudicating cases and how the outcome is. There's always a winner and a loser. We understand the appeals process." But what I don't understand is, even at this point of understanding the rules of engagement, that you all agree, well, excuse me, those involved agree to participate in, resulting the outcome, that action still is not taken. The hardest thing about doing the right thing is, like we said, we know it, but doing it. So, I'm imploring you guys as representatives of so many of our voices to do the right thing. Why shouldn't an attorney who represented people to have their voices heard not be paid for their services? I'm still at a loss for that. It makes me wanna speculate things, but I'm not gonna do it on this call. I just wanna speak to the truth of what has actually transpired and encourage you all to make a decision in your executive session to reconsider the fact of following the rules of engagement, to understand the process in which you agreed to participate and pay our attorneys the fees that Judge Jacobson said that she should be awarded. Thank you so much for your time, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman. Moderator, is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Not at this time, Deputy Director.
Okay, can I have a motion to close the public portion?
A move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, can I have a motion to go into executive session, uh, with adjournment?
Uh, yeah, uh, Deputy Director, um, just to point a clarification-
Certainly.
Uh, we need to go in, uh, a resolution to move into executive session for two matters of pending litigation. One, the Bratton Law LLC versus the county of Middlesex, and number two, the Central Jersey Progressive Democrats versus the Middlesex County Clerk. Um, and once that motion is a- adopted, uh, approved, we will go into executive session. When we are concluded, we do actually technically come out into the public portion, but only to adjourn.
Okay.
There's, uh, a- and just to confirm what Mr. Cradaville had asked previously, uh, there is no action to be taken on any of those, uh, two cases, but we do come back into the public to adjourn.
I apologize to Mr. Cradaville, if you're out there for any confusion. Okay, so can I have a motion to go into executive session?
A move.
Second.
Second. Uh, Roche?
County Commissioner Esquina Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner Koppel?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tomaro?
Yes.
County Commissioner Deputy Director Armwood?
Yes. Uh, we will now go into executive session.
At this time, Deputy Director, we will move non-participating folks to the lobby. Just give us a few minutes to do so, and I will let you know when we are ready.
Certainly.
You have been added to the waiting room. You cannot talk or listen until the host admits